Mountain Road from ITC Utah eight four zero three seven. Uh, we're gonna begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance that's gonna, that I'm gonna lead, and then we're gonna have a thought and prayer by Mark. I would ask everyone to stand. The joyous.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, as we humbly come before thee at this time, Father, the opportunity that we have this meeting as a city council and mayor and staff and residents for the opportunity that we have of living in this beautiful community. And please be with us this evening as we discuss different items that we'll be able to do in a pleasing manner and be able to have unity and respect for each other. We'd also at this time, particularly this month with the drought, weather conditions, and with the holiday that our community will be safe and protected and people will be able to enjoy the holidays, but at the same time, make sure that we are protected and safe as a community. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Uh, thank you. Item number one point three rule call. Haley, go ahead and listen up.
Um, council member Gary Anderson.
Please excuse.
Council member Mark Cutlal.
Here.
Council member Eileen Moss.
Here.
Council member Lauren Savley.
Here.
Council member Sean Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor John Coleman.
Here. Thank you. Uh, item number one point four training. We put uh three minutes on our agenda to have an elected official uh train us on our responsibilities as an elected official. Tonight it is Sean. Sean, you've got three minutes.
Well, thus as an elected official, I just wanted to pivot a little bit and the training I wanted to re-talk about um fire prevention. Um, there's been a lot going on recently and so I just wanted to reiterate some stuff that we've talked about in the last couple of months in terms of about fire prevention and safety and those type of things, if that's acceptable to you. So. Um, so clearing the vegetation and debris from our house. Um, the grass, the leaves, the extra trimmings um can act as fuel. We need to try and maintain a thirty to forty feet barrier around all structures. And we can do that by cleaning it up, you know, getting rid of those type of things. Clear out our gutters, um pine needles and debris, rake it out, do anything we can currently to help prevent that. Um, safety practice, um avoid dirt, um don't have any open fire pits. Don't do anything while there's wind, while there's a high di- uh high fire danger. Um, we need to be smart if it's high temperatures outside to maybe forego that activity. Um, when doing this, make sure that all fires have a good distance between anything that's flammable. Make sure we have all the safety gear, extra water, hoses, um fire hydrants and most type of things available. Um, this is not only an individual effort, but also a community effort. If you see things that might be an issue um within our neighborhood or our neighbor's house, maybe, maybe offer to help them clean it up or bring it to somebody. Maybe we can get some people out there to help clean up something that could, you know, um prevent uh uh an accident or hopefully, you know, somebody losing their home or something like that. And last, um to stay informed of what's going on with the local weather and those type of things. I mean, like, we had thunderstorm warnings tonight with microbursts, right? We all know that um right before the fourth, we had that fire that started out west in Caswell. That was a lightning strike. So um it doesn't have to be manmade, but we can try and prevent what we can and what we can do. And all, obviously, the twenty-fourth is coming up. Maybe we should refrain from doing some of our own personal fireworks. I'm a big Fourth of July guy, but high fireworks, um the loud ones, they can drift and it just, it's probably not what's best for the um community right now. Uh, that's all I have to say, sir.
Awesome. Thanks, Sean. Uh, moving on to item number two is the declaration of common interest. I think I just like slid that whole thing.
Potentially, we're gonna be discussing signs and like some kind of parochial.
Okay.
You can say that for probably Sean as well.
We will be sure. Great. Anything else? Excellent. Not seeing anyone. We want to add number three, which is a public conference period. We put this on all our agendas to allow residents to present to city council. Uh, we asked you to keep those presentations to three minutes. Do we have anyone that would like to present this evening? Please support. Say your name.
I'm Linda Crismer. My address is one five six three James Drive. I started writing these thoughts down after the Fourth of July and there've been other events that have just added to it. So I'm just gonna read what I've written through the past week or so. So first of all, the citizens were asked to participate in the survey about elections. So Fruit Heights stayed with the caucus who switched to a primary. As I understand it, the majority who did the survey wanted to change to a primary. Nevertheless, the city council wanted the caucus, so that is what they voted for. Citizen input meant nothing. Citizens and some city staff expressed concern about allowing fireworks east of Highway eighty-nine. One city council person recognized the concerns of the citizens and the dangers of the fireworks during the death drought and in a red wildfire zone. Thank you, Mark, for voting against that. Uh, four council members disregarded their constituents' concerns and voted to allow fireworks at the city building. Maybe they live far enough away that they aren't disturbed by eight days out of thirty-one by the rackets, smelly polluted air and threaded fire and embers that fall in yards and on houses. This was back when I was just concerned about the noise most of all. It seems the council members vote for what they want, not for the concerns of the cit- that the citizens express. This is disappointing, but not surprising in light of politics today. People in favor of fireworks say it's their right. Is entertainment a right or a privilege? They want to have fun and celebrate, all of which could be done at professional displays. This is all for themselves with no regard for community. People who want no fireworks east of eighty-nine are concerned that their property, their neighborhoods and the city are in a wildfire zone during a severe drought. Maybe they already had their homeowner's insurance canceled like we have, and I know another person on our street has had theirs canceled. These concerns are long-lasting, life-changing events should fireworks, should fireworks start a fire. The fire behind Mountain Road Church was a wake-up call. According to firefighters, had the fire not been caught as quickly as it was, Fruit Heights would have experienced a major fire burning up through the gully, possibly destroying homes. In addition to residents losing homeowner's insurance, what about the state mandate about eighty thousand homes in targeted areas to be assessed at the owner's expense for fire dangers? Wouldn't it help if everyone in Fruit Heights could say that there were no fireworks in their city and therefore they don't need to be assessed? When I was teaching, I always gave the kids an analogy to help them understand what I was talking about. So bear with me. Suppose we were having a party in a barn. The barn had straw on the floor. People were dancing and singing and having a great time and somebody starts deciding to flick lit matches on the floor. It might start a fire. It might not. Would you stop the kids from flicking the matches or would you say it's their right? It's time for common sense and responsible decisions to do everything possible to protect our city from fire. Lightning cannot be controlled. Allowing people to play with fire can and must be controlled before it's too late. Please say no to fireworks for July twenty-fourth and for future holidays. The pioneers who will be celebrated on the twenty-fourth would say, good job.
Thanks, Linda. Any others? Uh, seeing you're here anyway, we're gonna move on to item number four point one, which is YCC. I would work. We have two YCCs in the way here tonight. Thank you for coming.
Yeah. So in June, we got some actually.
I'm Josh Cox.
I'm Mason River. And in June, we planned a hike with the Senate of the YSC, but unfortunately didn't respond in time. So it's just our council that went and exposed a lot of fun to talk and be outdoors together. And then we also had the Fourth of July period and we got our all over candy and decorated the cars. It was a lot of fun.
Yep. Um, and then we had a meeting this, not this last night, but uh last week and uh we talked about our August activity, which is going to be helping out with the uh Founder's Day and then also a possibility, we're not sure yet, but maybe doing a five K there as well.
Awesome. That's great. You guys did a great job with the, with the quotes and it's um, walk with you. This is a great channel. Thank you. Um, appreciate all you guys doing.
Yep.
Um, I'm number five point one. Uh, can I go over this out? The topic for political science?
Mayor, council and residents, uh great city. Um, with the, the policy of political science, um there's been a request that uh from multiple individuals, not just those running, that the science be out a little bit longer. Right now, our current ordinance lasts for thirty days um before the election. A lot of times the mail-in ballots and early voting happens before science is put out. I'm just coming through to the council to see if that's something they want me to look at, a beginning process or are they wanting to um just keep the how it is, swing them for directions from the council on that? If that's something they want me to, to report with.
I'll look at you guys. Okay. I have some thoughts. I think we should extend it to forty days. I'm playing with, if we could do forty-five days, can the city process it? Maybe sixty days on the private market. Because I think we have to have more than the day ballots comes out. You need to be able to door to door, have your name out. So I'm, I think we should do it in four or five days. But I'm also trying to have the idea, could you uncertain private property? Or would that make it too confusing? Of course, I always think.
Well, please do any thoughts?
I think it should be done to earlier, however this.
And I'm a little personal on this one. I, I think we open up for political science. We open up for any hazard sign as well. Uh, it's, if we allow organs for forty-five days, then we, someone washing windows can have a sign for forty-five days as well, correct? Or is that just?
So the political sign, in our words, is just for political signage. It is, it has its own um section in the sign. Section now, I will tell you, if there's a one there, uh that sign can be out, that requirement changes because it can be out thirty days before the primary election. And then those winners can leave those signs out and continue until the election. So, uh.
I, I personally, I don't know, I think it's noise and it's uh, I don't, I don't know how extended, but I would side with the fact that I think we need to put into consideration mail-in ballots, at least have a couple of weeks before mail-in ballots go out. I don't know.
So forty-five to eighty, probably with that.
Probably.
So.
Be good in mail-in ballots.
Well, three weeks before. I was wondering since mail-in ballots go out three weeks before the election, what if we extended the thirty days to three weeks, which could be fifty-one days or fifty days, something like that. Not much different. But because of mail-in ballots, it basically gives the same, same amount of time.
So I, I think like, would you, would you go back to the attorney and bring something and force the council to the next?
So I, I, on this actually, I will, I will put a timeframe together. I, on this, I would just recommend the issues from the council where they want that timeframe. There's not a lot that has to be changed in the ordinance.
If you change the ordinance itself, since it's a land ordinance, it would need to go to the planning commission, but to.
If I'm changing the areas of where science can be and those kind of things.
And big things in the ordinance.
For a timeline, I understand it doesn't have to go to the attorney and that. It's just a matter of can we extend the amount of days? Is that something the council wants to look at or is that something the council would just say with our thirty days? And go from there. And so that was one of the, um, I've had individuals say at least forty-five days.
Do you guys say fifty?
I don't care. Forty-five or fifty.
I'd just say whatever you do, keep it be the same versus public and private, just so you don't confuse people.
Be the same.
Yeah.
Okay. I will.
Cause that's what, that's what the current ordinance has.
It does. It is. It's the same for all of it. So I will put something together. I will send that to the city council for them to look at and then we'll talk again and then we'll move forward.
Correct. Thank you. Uh, five point two is e-bikes and order of vehicles.
So this, this is a, another subject that has came up is, I will tell you, every community is issues with, uh, I'm not even saying necessarily just the pedal and suspended um bicycles, but there were more, there's e-bikes that are fast. There were ones that are kind of like motorcycle. There've been a lot of different issues with uh young kids not obeying some of the requirements. But the Utah law doesn't necessarily, I would say the Utah law doesn't necessarily help itself. I was gonna go through and read that whole law. There's a lot of complications throughout that law because this is such a new problem. Uh, I've talked with a couple of surrounding communities, Farmington right now has policies. I would say uh kind of aggressive where uh the officer is ready to take that bike. Uh, the parent has to come to the police station and get it and have a discussion about the bike. Uh, if that happens again, there's a line associated with it. I, I, this is something I think is important for us as a city to look at, not only the safety aspect of it, and I believe there's a, there's ways to go about that, that there's still the opportunities, but there's also um that safety aspect that goes along with it and there's requirements because the requirements are not, are not being met. All the way around. But it, there's, there's a lot that has to be defined out that um I just, once again, this is something I wanted to bring to the city council. We'll see if they wanted uh me to continue to work on this and um work with a couple of other cities and so we can get a program in Davis County. So that is pretty close to the law species.
Would we, would that impound place be the city hall or would it be the sheriff's office?
It would be city hall if we did that same kind of process in Fruit Heights where they would have to come to the city hall and they would end up probably talking with an officer the first time and having a discussion and then moving forward from that point.
Do we have a location currently that we could put those in?
We, we could, we could put them in the gentleman basement.
Okay.
There's a area that we need to.
I, I would recommend we continue forward.
Okay.
Leverage the ordinance that were written and passed, I think by Farmington and.
Caswell. Caswell.
Uh, I think it is Layton and Seto. I think they're just three of them that don't have a sheet right now. Uh, casual is not.
Haley doesn't have anything, but you know, they're, they're in the same process.
Facebook, so maybe they were just talking about it or.
Yeah. I will tell you that there's a lot of discussion between all the cities right now and the, and the police and those because of the safety issues that are coming up.
Well, that's what I think we need to focus on is the safety. I mean, I've almost hit a couple of kids and just since the meeting started, those two young ones that were on that bike, they just came out of that church parking lot.
They're going back.
Saw a car coming this way and they had to hurry and turn right and he almost lost control, but you know, if you, if somebody hits one of those kids, whether it's an older person, mid-age, or even somebody with a brand new driver's license, I mean, they can be scarred for life on something.
Okay. I would too work towards on that. Yes.
I have a question. Does, do you think some of the cities and councils have any direction on this?
I, they, I know there's been talking to legislators sessions and stuff like that and there's a lot of support to get something in place. It's just a matter of.
Is that something that you, you as the city staff would want to have to do with here?
I, I, I think it's a good thing. I, I believe if it's handled the right way, the policy's done the right way, yes, I think it's a fine, it's a, it's a way to go. Uh, I'm just gonna throw out an example. There's been a vehicle, a golf cart that's been racing around. Um, they were stopped by one of our Davis County sheriffs. Um, the, the parent was very upset that they were stopped and said they would be coming to city council or to a city official and getting that taken care of because it doesn't matter that they're eight-year-old kids driving the wrong way or doing whatever on the roads. So there, there, there needs to be something to go along with that. Uh, another example, I've been reading a lot about the off-road vehicle laws and the requirements. If you're under the age of eighteen, you're required to wear a helmet. It doesn't matter. If you're under the age of sixteen and you don't have a driver's license, you have to be accompanied with an adult. Uh, and everybody has to take a, a test and get a certificate. I have, I have a friend, his eight-year-old son was riding around in camp on their four-wheeler. He never took the test. It's a hundred dollar ticket that he received. He received as a parent for letting his child drive it without it. He went home and took the test. So. I would, I think it's a, something that is important for all of us in Davis County and is for support.
Okay. I just would say that we complain about having our children indoors on video games all day and these e-bikes are a new thing. I do believe that there does need to be safety and some things that the parents are responsible for and they're responsible for along with keeping our citizens that way, but I also think that we don't come down with the, the, you know, Thor's hammer and over-regulate everything. There's gotta be a good balance in there to still allow our children to be outside and do those things they wanna do, but still be safe.
Thanks, man. Item number five point three bid for twenty twenty-five street maintenance project. Hey, Lane, thank you for giving that in.
Yeah. Jones and Associates actually put this together for us.
You guys, you guys are.
Councils for Mill and overlay on Elda, Daines, Cherry, Homestead and Jost. Two in Cholmeray, Payback. Um, these roads are in pretty rough condition. They, they need to be done. Uh, the recommendation is to granite construction. We've worked with them in the past and they're, they're gonna come out. So.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I really appreciate what Grant sent last year, just working with him, everything to work with.
I'm motion to award.
Yeah, just working with him.
Damn.
Action items.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Five point four audit services by Darren.
Um, those guys, as we discussed, we are auditor retired this year, just last year.
Probably. I should probably think of a little bit better so I can come up and you guys like slap.
I think they might be a little bit better.
Why did I hurt? I'll take, I'll take a blame though. I'm sorry.
But our, our auditor retired this last year. Um, so we went out for RFP to um get bids for an auditor to do audit for the state. We went to, had nine different companies here. Uh, we had three that turned in a bid on, by the dead, deadline and I had two that called and just said they, they're just too busy. They can't do government or city as time. Each one of the proposals that I sent out to the council um have been through by myself and also by Crystal. Um, we ran through those. We called um references for each one of them, um and actually multiple. Not one of them got, uh, yeah, probably wouldn't use them. Everyone who was using each one of these companies said we would continue to use them and when we go back to our RFP, we hope they get it. So as far as the references, the references were great. Um, each one of them, uh, and I've talked to each one of these companies um just to see if there was concerns about fruit head city audit. Each one of them had actually gone through and looked at our previous years audits to be able to have an understanding of our budget system. Today, as I've gone through different things, my recommendation, um, and the biggest reason for my recommendation is I, is finally the, the price um is Gilbert and Stewart. Uh, their, their cost is the cheapest for a regular audit, audit um out of all of them and their price um stays the same for the five years. So that will be my recommendation to the staff, but if there are to the council, if there's any questions, I don't know. I'm ready.
Great. Nice job. We're doing well. Is that right?
Alright.
Can we add one more item to discussion?
We'll, we'll add that after five point two before we.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay.
We'll just add that to an action item.
Understood.
It was previously an action item, correct?
No, it's great. Yep.
What's up? Yeah. Um, so six point one, approve denying the award of bid for twenty twenty-five street maintenance project to Granite Construction.
Granite, yep.
I make a motion that we award the contract for street maintenance to Granite Construction Company with their bid of three hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
I second.
Thank you, Eileen. Thanks to my Mark. Any further discussion? All, all in favor of approving the award? Excuse me. All in favor of awarding the bid for the twenty twenty-five street maintenance project to Granite Construction? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Imposed. Thank you. Uh, six point two, approve deny the auditing services uh with the award to Gilbert. Gilbert Stewart, yes.
So I make the motion that we approve the audit, auditing services for Fruit Heights City to Gilbert and Stewart CPA firm.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Flo. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of awarding the bid to Gilbert Stewart for auditing services to, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, forty minutes for June seventeenth. Do we have any uh modifications or do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I talked to Haley earlier today about a couple of small things, just little, and I, Haley did that, right? Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve that June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five city council minutes as modified.
Second. Thank you, Flo. Thank you, Mark. And all, all in favor of approving minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Nothing tabled. Calendar item of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five is a planning commission meeting. We have the August fifth, city council meeting, August nineteenth, city council meeting. Item number nine, those past discussion items, um, we can bring something up at this time.
So, um, the way past discussion items work, uh, someone from the prevailing side, they say we bring that up for discussion. Um, being on the prevailing side of the fireworks ordinance, I'm going to request that we reopen.
Uh, so I have a motion from Eileen to reopen the discussion of fireworks. Firework discussion mostly on a map. It was approved, correct? A motion from Eileen, who has a second?
Second.
A motion from Eileen is second from uh Sean. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of opening this discussion item, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Well, I think Linda did a great job of doing a recap. A lot of the items that she had in there, I was gonna try to bring up, but she did a good job on that, so. And I guess what really, the fire that we had the other day, you know, by fireworks and I mean, I can see the smoke and smell it at my house, so that's how I was aware of it.
It's hard because it, it was illegal fireworks at an illegal time in an illegal place. Thus far, we have not had fireworks with legal fireworks in legal places. But I believe that our, our drought has worsened according to state information and so I, I, I believe that we ought to, to um consider adopting the map as, as put out by Davis County.
Uh, so this way we restrict fireworks east of eighty-nine um and as well as Nichols Park and then the G A track.
Okay, this is a map not like Davis County, but do we even need a vote? I mean, it's already.
Well.
We have to adopt this.
I, I want to adopt the map as is for the rest of this year and relook at the areas that we have. The reason I say that is because people have been so used to doing fireworks. Like, the twenty-fourth is coming up next, next week, right? I wanna adopt it, but then we have to blast it out there so that people aren't getting into it with the fire marshal. I have printed off maps so I can walk around the areas that we'll be restricting it from, so they are aware of it. I just, I don't want to adopt the map indefinitely, but as the restrictions is, because illegal fireworks, people are gonna do them wherever they want. Um, I'm not saying that we shouldn't keep the map as is in the future. I'm just saying, I just don't wanna say, this is the way it is 'cause it's a dry year, change it. That's just my opinion, but I want to adopt it as is for the rest of this year.
But instead of adopt, can we just say, use the state and county?
Recommendations or council?
We move to using that map.
I like that idea. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have another question, who is the fire marshal compared to the fire chief?
So the fire marshal, his name is James Weston, um, he, he's the one that goes through and works with the state, fire marshal. On all the link codes, all the laws, all the enforcement, all the investigations. He works for Farm and Good, uh, archive. And, um, fire chief, um, I don't know if you're trying to do, we have a new fire chief, Shelby Willis. And she'll actually be coming to the city council in August, uh, to meet the council. Uh, there's two different, uh, fire marshal has a different job than the fire chief. It, there's a lot to do, fire prevention, uh, review of subdivisions, uh, understanding all the laws. And working along the different cities and stuff like that.
So they put out a map like this every year? The, and so.
So there, there is, there is a map that is put out, uh, during the time, it goes by what the communities have presented. Utah State Legislature had, uh, station has created law this year. Where, um, it has to do with wildfire interface. And they've gone through and looked at different areas where there will, could be issues with wildfires in homes and all those kind of things. And, and started changing all the state mapping for the interface. And, and this is part of that, updated that map of where. There are changes and the change panels.
In addition to this, Darren, I think one of the things that we've talked about that's an issue is people, um. We actually had people on, on the Fourth of July that had fire pits with open fires. Um, you know, and, and I think we need to make sure that it's also understood that. Open, open fires are gonna be a problem in accordance with this, so it's not just firework restrictions. It has to be open fires as well.
Um, great, I appreciate that. So I would give a motion to, uh, to, what's the word?
Adopt.
No, it wasn't adopt.
You.
Recognize, recognize, enforce it. Enforce this.
Obey.
They, they, I would give a motion to enforce the state and county, the state and county map for firework and open fire restrictions. There it is.
Okay, I, I make a motion that we approve the math from Davis County and the state for fire restrictions.
Right.
Fire restrictions and fireworks and fire.
Firework and fire restrictions.
So I'm, I'm a motion to Mark, you have a second?
I'll second.
May I ask a clarifying question? Is that indefinitely, or is that just for the rest of this year?
So.
By adopting it, are we seeing it every day, whatever they put out from here forward, that's what we're adopting?
Every year we, we re-review it.
Okay.
As part of our ordinance.
Okay.
So we, uh, in June, I believe June first is when we have to review and, and adopt where our firework restriction is, we've done.
Okay.
So if it's not that, it's for the rest of the year.
Understood.
But I think next year we should probably check with the county and the state. Because there's no point going through all this and have to.
Well, I'm okay with it, I just, where we're talking about fireworks and open pit fires, there's a lot of families that are very responsible, have small fires and like real smart stuff and all that stuff. I just don't wanna be overly restricting people's rights to their yards, that's all I'm saying.
Um, second of all, uh, with this motion on the table, if people are coming to this city building where we have allowed fireworks, where are we going to recommend they go as a city, Darren?
West side of the highway tonight.
Just to a neighborhood somewhere?
Yeah.
Cause we go, the city does not own property except for Ellison Park. The city does not own any property that we can recommend they go to.
Could anything, could anything be? Could anything be done in Davis County Golf Course, I know it's close to the.
I think, I think that's too close to the park, cause I mean, some of the subdivisions that we, like where we currently allow fireworks here is so far from the mountains. But you look at Galey Trail and where those roads are on each side, I think that's too close to the whole area.
But Ellison Park, I don't know, can, just by, that might be an idea. I don't know.
I think that's.
But, but the thing is, it's just a patch of grass, it's not a true place to launch fireworks from, it's stranded by all.
Anywhere you do it, you need to have water and a park, but, uh.
I just don't think we can recommend one.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you all know that the fire on Sunday, which was behind the church, there were burnt embers. Out across Mountain Road in the Rasmussen's yard. And there was no wind that day. So even the fireworks that were on the west side of the sound wall, if the wind's blowing from the west, they're coming over.
Okay, so a motion and a second motion for Mark, a second for Flo, all in favor of adopting, using, enforcing. This map is presented by the state and by the county for firework and open fire restrictions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There it is. Uh, item number ten, city council report, Mark.
Okay, mentioned briefly, Darren and I met with the new fire chief, uh, Shelby Willis. I was impressed, she was five hours on the job and she was sitting in Darren's office, wanting to make sure that we're working on a relationship. We discussed the contract, service levels, we discussed having a truck in the city two days before and after the holidays to watch for fireworks. And also that we want to, to continue the quarterly update, and she was very supportive on all of that stuff. And I also understand she's been in contact with Darren on some few issues with the fireworks. And she did have a truck in here those days that we requested it.
We were set for the rounds up just on eighteen hundred, the evenings on the third and the fourth, just watching, making sure the weather. People laying off and a truck was buzzing around. I, I love seeing trucks, especially on eighteen hundred, buzzing around and making sure people know what's going on, they did a great job.
Yeah, I think they did, and I think we can continue that good working relationship that we had with them. I mean, just here on Sunday, they responded within about five minutes and, and did a very good job of taking care of that, so. Okay, I wanna talk about Founder's Day, we're getting close. Uh, the theme this year will be celebrating the Old West. The theme will be carried through this chalk festival, some games and decorations, including an old farm equipment and cars. And, uh, Lane's already brought some of his equipment out there. Before I, before I got my write-up from Karen today, I texted him over the weekend and said, I thought that looked pretty cool out there. So I would imagine we're gonna get probably Skyler's tractor here sometime, or a few other things, so I think that's cool that they were doing that. There will be a large mechanical bull that evening. It can handle riders from old, so I think she's meaning me and young people. The company carries insurance and rider sign and waiver. There also will be a lasso dummies, so they might be lassling me, that kids can try to lasso and bale the hay with saddles. There will also be a painted buffalo and photo ops, like wanted posters, things like that for the children. The advertising and the publicity of it will start rolling out the first part of next week, and as we know, she'll do a great job with that. Also, the quilt show has been such a huge success the last few years. So this, and there was a lot of people that, I was in there a couple of times and heard people say, oh, I wish we could buy or whatever. So we're gonna have a silent auction of two quilts and other supplies. And that will run from August eleventh through Founder's Day. So I think there's a couple of really cool things, so I think she's trying, the staff is trying to change it up and make it a little bit different this year, and I think those are some great ideas. And I just think that we need to thank Karen and the entire staff on how hard they're working to put this fun event together and changing things up for us. And then let's just make sure us, as city council, we offer up any support we can. And the day of the event, just to make sure we're available to help, normally she's had us help, uh, do cleanup, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, Fourth of July.
That was awesome.
Thanks, everyone. It was fun. Thanks, Greg. I think they always appreciate us bringing that table to run at the breakfast. And so that's.
Don't you love it, but that's a fundraiser for Kaysville and Fruit Heights City Council.
We take the money.
And we collect a lot of money this year.
Yeah.
And a lot for the star, the donations to the star. I saw a couple of people flip in a hundred dollar bills.
So many things, and the parade was just a lot of fun, too. And you can eat that.
Yes. Can we keep it under a hundred degrees like we did today, uh, last week?
No, we're not gonna put that down.
Yes.
But I.
The cloud cover was nice.
Uh, also, can we do? If you, you don't want too much, but we ran out this time, so that's something to, to be about to finish.
Right.
It was kinda hard because we followed these on, they were trying out a whole truck vehicle, maybe, which.
We tried that too much.
They had, they had.
We actually got full batteries in the last, we were off as they could, all wrapped up.
And you, when you were kinda like, we have two pieces for you.
Yeah, they, they also had, they had two city council members and a mayor who wasn't, who didn't participate in their votes, so they had less individuals.
Oh, right, yeah. Okay, and then one other thing, the devotion, thank you for representing as well, Mr. Mayor, and I think that it was so great that, um. Mr. Howell was so, a really good, humble leader, uh, hero, as we call him.
A son here. It was really nice to taste along in one of our residents as well.
Second time in eight years we've had a Fruit Heights resident recognized by Kaysville.
That means we should get a portion of the money that they raised for the breakfast then.
Second time in eight years, isn't that funny?
That is funny.
Uh, thanks all for your, uh, for the combat of the fundraising, I wish more people were all over.
We'll have the music ready next time.
I, I think you need to, yeah.
My humming didn't go very far.
That's okay. This is a good opportunity, I think, for our high school public play, good work to do. I think that's fine.
Excellent, thank you, that was a lot of fun. Anything?
Um, on the recycle, um, I've had discussions with people and I just have a question, and I don't know. If there's anything that we could ever put into place, but the question is, if people would really get into recycling and not have as much garbage. Would it be possible to have the half-size, um, garbage cans? Ogden has, has some, you get to choose what size garbage can. And just thinking if we, you know, we have a lot of, of two, two-person households. And, um, by the time they do recycling, that the, the black can is ending up, um, pretty empty. And so if we could do that, that reduce costs, we'd take six dollars off the cost of a, of a black can. By having a, a half-size, um, then that would maybe encourage a few more people to, uh, be more serious about their recycling efforts. So that was, that was one of the things that's brought up to me. And also, um, Lisa Ward has, has put together for the emergency preparedness and on Facebook, a, um. Some suggestions as, uh, Sean was, was talking about for how to reduce fire risk around your home. I don't know, Darren, is there anything that can pull us out of the, of the, you know, high price? That, I mean, we're just stuck in that.
I, I.
I will, I will tell you, as long as we're continuing with our community wildfire program. And we're doing our goals and we're meeting the service hours and stuff like that, that is, that, that's a huge thing.
Okay.
If there is something and it's a wildfire, that's almost an insurance policy for that.
So what can we do?
For homes necessarily, but for the cost of providing the fire, most of the things.
What, what can we do to support that as a city? Is there some volunteer work, more volunteer work that we can put out there as far as, as, um, reducing that? Is there, is there something that we can ask for our community to be involved in to help with that? Uh, September, the day of service, yeah.
I was gonna, it's education.
Okay.
Uh, prepare your yard, because your yard does affect your neighbor's yard in a wildfire. And as we've got the information through the street cleanup and stuff like that, people have taken that opportunity to start clearing around their homes.
Okay.
Uh, and, and that's a big portion of that. I know there's a couple individuals that have talked to different insurance companies and have told them that the city participates in the program. And you can look it up online, uh, participating in the program, and, and they've done those things to help prevent around their house. And they've been able to get a better rate for the fire.
Can, can we maybe do a bridge runner on that, that part? Of how, how you can participate and know that that's what we are? And then the other thing is, is, um, Mr. Bergold came and talked about the dead wood down in the Galey Trail. And I know in the past we have had some of our day of service project down in there with people, chainsaws and trucks, taking out, uh, taking out dead wood. Is that something that we could maybe investigate doing again this year on our day of service? Okay, thank you.
Sean? Excellent. Um, just two things, Fourth of July, thank you staff, um, I understand there's a lot of the COVID on the county's team, I appreciate what you guys do. Um, I do recognize the fire department, they did a fantastic job, you know, continue to do a good job. I love seeing their brush strike buzzing around the city, there's nothing makes me more happy than, no, not just here, but they're active, they're, they're driving around looking. And active, looking for, for areas that they can go and investigate and then how it works. Thank you, Lane, your team's been awesome. You guys did not get recognized enough, but those parks are looking better and better. I truly appreciate the, all the items looking as good as they do in the middle of July, you guys have done a really good job prepping them so they can, so they can in the middle of July. Thanks for all you did. Uh, staff awards, Lane, two.
Uh, a couple things, um, all of our parks, Allison, Creekview, um, Green Hill, they all have smart B high tires now. Pelican serves some water. Another thing on the e-bikes, I'm, I'm replacing about three sprinklers a week at the parks. They're about eighty bucks a piece, they're driving by and taking over. So just keep that, keep that in, in mind when we make this work. They're, they're tearing up the parks.
Okay, that's over three hundred bucks a week that we're spending on replacing sprinkler heads?
About two hundred and fifty, I haven't yet, this is our particular park they're using. Nichols in here, this is the worst, yeah.
Um, any recommendations you have to go into the ordinance, we would, we would listen to very specifically, so please be involved with you and your team in this ordinance. Because I, I feel that we as, as the state and city officials should have some authority and, and not just the sheriff and enforcing this ordinance.
Yeah, you guys were here, you saw what was going on long before that sheriff got here. Um, so if you had some teeth that you could do something with it.
Is it just e-bikes that could, for consumeness, or what?
I mean, e-bike scooters, and, and they can just recycle, yeah, motorcycles, I mean, I've, I've seen gas-powered motorcycles out there, tearing it up, Dino Jones.
Golf carts.
Golf carts for sure, yes. It's, it's all hybrid vehicles, but they're just, they're tearing them up.
Thank you, Darren, you have anything?
Just, uh, to give information for the council, uh, a lot of the cities, uh, this last year or two have, have. Have been destroyed. Parks, heart tunnel, new guy hammered this last weekend. As far as things busted and what could be, things are going up, you know? But the sheriff's investigating a lot of them. Enforcement, that's coming back, as these individual car courts have got to understand that a hundred dollars isn't covering the cost of big things. Those costs are a lot higher, we actually had a youth that was caught penalizing young, in the tunnel. The court said, yeah, we've been, I'm paying three hundred dollars. I sent it over back to the court, I said, that doesn't even cover my cost of paint. I average about seven hundred and fifty dollars when I buy a paint. Uh, I averaged about seven hundred and fifty dollars when I buy paint to remake the tunnel. Uh, and requested that in the future they, um, will do a city report. Saving funds so that we can recover our costs because it is in our cost consolidated. Just a hands up.
Okay. Anything else, Darren? Thank you for all you're doing. Uh, we have nothing else on our agenda. Now I'm gonna take the motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
My Ling, second from Sean, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, closing in at seven fifty one. Thank you.